All right, Glover'sville School District, take two. If you call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose name liberty and justice are.
I welcome everyone. We're going to get right into our presentations tonight, and we're going to start off with a budget presentation. Kathy Mayer.
Okay, here I go. Good evening. Tonight, the message I'm about to deliver is significantly different from the March 7th meeting, when I last spoke to you about the proposed 2022-23 budget. This is due to the incoming kindergarten class and the number of students who will need special education programs. Special education costs make up 22% of our proposed $71 million budget. As the superintendent has said in the past, special education has a blank check. This is, in part, due to regulations imposed upon districts by the New York State Education Department and the district's responsibility to provide a free and appropriate public education to all students. The special education office staff are in the process of conducting annual review meetings for our current students and looking at incoming kindergarten students to evaluate their programmatic needs. The 2022-23 kindergarten class has 10 students who will be enrolled in the autistic program and four who will be enrolled in the life skills program. Five of these students need one-to-one aids as well. These placements with related services cost between $50,000 to $135,000 each. The district will receive high-cost aid during the 2324 school year for these high-cost programs, but the expense must be borne in the 2223 school year in order for that to happen. Private school and residential placements are also projected to increase in the upcoming school year. The district is currently exploring the possibility of creating a St. Mary's program at the high school, similar to the one currently operating at the middle school. If it comes to fruition, this would accommodate four students who currently attend Bosse's programs. There are a lot of variables to consider, so it may not be viable for the 2223 school year, but we will keep you updated as things progress. This $2.5 million increase in special education costs has forced us to take another look at the additional staff we had planned to include in next year's budget. The AIS positions and social work guidance positions we had hoped to include will be removed. That doesn't mean that services won't be provided, it just means we will need to be creative in how we offer them. For example, the district will be contracting with HF and Bosse's to provide instructional coaches for AIS math and AIS reading. These coaches will work with our current staff and provide guidance and professional development opportunities to assist them in improving their instructional techniques and collaborating with other staff within their tenure area. Grant funding will be utilized for this, therefore eliminating the cost in the general fund. SEL services will be provided through our community partners, as well as consultants, again utilizing grant funding. You may ask, why can't we fund these new positions with federal stimulus money? Isn't that what it is supposed to be used for? Well, as we have discussed in the past, federal stimulus money is a short-term revenue source, and the district isn't in a position to absorb the costs of staff and the benefits associated with them in future general fund budgets. Partnering with local agencies affords us the opportunity to provide these services to our students while eliminating the need to lay off staff once the federal funding is no longer available. Other changes to the proposed budget include the creation of a student conduct coordinator at the high school, thereby freeing up the deans who can move back to the classroom full-time. As a result of this, a social studies position will be eliminated through attrition. There is the potential that the student conduct coordinator position may be filled by a current employee who's salary is paid with grant funds. If this is the case, it is anticipated that a stipend would be offered for the additional dean duties that would be grant-funded as well. The assistant superintendent and high school administrators are analyzing current section numbers and offerings to ensure we are most effectively utilizing our current faculty and financial resources. A music position at the middle school will be eliminated through attrition, but a math-science position has been added to provide instruction to students who could be educated in an alternative education setting. The superintendent is waiting for confirmation from HF and Bosse's on whether an alternative ed program will be offered for middle school students. If it is, Glover'sville will participate, resulting in the elimination of the new position and reassigning a current staff member. The budget will most likely remain stagnant, as the cost of the alternative education program will offset the cost of district staff. Included within this proposed budget is a human resources director, an additional secretary at the Boulevard Elementary School, three cleaners, two workdays at the elementary schools, an athletic trainer, and an assistant in our IT department. A majority of the funding for these positions comes from the likely elimination of an administrative position through attrition, buildings and grounds positions that had been previously budgeted but not filled, the contract with St. Mary's Hospital for Athletic Training Services no longer being needed, and the elimination of computer support services through Capital Region Bosse's. As you can see on the handout, the general support budget is down by $12,614. The departments that support this are Board of Education, Superintendent Business Office, Buildings and Grounds, Property Insurance, Legal and Data Processing. The Buildings and Grounds budget is up by $194,000 due to the contract with Advanced Cleaning for McNabb and Meco Cleaning Services, various preventive maintenance contracts that hadn't been executed in prior budgets, and the effects of the salary increases provided in '21-'22. Property and liability insurance is up $16,450, because increased cyber liability insurance is a necessity and is very costly. Data processing costs through Bosse's are down approximately $178,000, as the IT director has recommended no longer participating in the computer support services costs through NAREC. The Bosse's administrative services costs are down $75,000. These costs are based on the district's attendance and enrollment numbers, known as ARWADA, from prior years that have significantly decreased. I am currently looking into this to determine why this is the case. The instructional budget is projected to increase by $2,528,536. This piece of the budget consists of all costs associated with educating our students, general teaching, library, health, guidance, athletics, et cetera. The majority of the increase can be attributed to special education costs I mentioned earlier and contractual salary increases. There are decreases in some areas. CTE slots are limited to 60 students. Replacement staff for those retiring have been budgeted at a lower step, and PTech program costs are less due to the number of students returning or graduating in which programs they choose to attend. Transportation costs are significantly higher, $638,518. This is due in part to HF and Bosse's increasing wages in '21-'22 to recruit and retain staff and the number and cost of our out-of-district runs. The district has an ever-increasing number of students with McKinney-Vento designation, and if they wish to remain in a program offered by Glover'sville, the district is responsible to transport those students each day. Typically, these students are able to be placed on a district run, and a private contract needs to be secured. These contracts are extremely costly. Increases in gas and diesel fuel have also been factored in. Transportation aid will be received in the 2324 school year. However, it works like high-cost aid, and the expense needs to be incurred in the 2223 school year to be eligible for aid the following year. Employee benefits are up slightly, approximately $45,000. Health insurance costs are down, $240,000, because the Fullmont Health Trust adopted a rate at 2% less than the '21-'22 rates, and those employees covered under the teacher's contract will contribute 20% of the premium, rather than 18%, as is currently the case. The employer's share of retirement cost for non-instructional employees is 16.2%, and for instructional staff, it is 10.29%, resulting in an increase in those line items of $193,774. Dental insurance and FICA, which is social security, make up the additional increase. Debt service has increased by $667,177, and this is the principal on interest payments due on outstanding debt. Overall, the proposed budget is up 5.67%, or $3,813,570 over '21-'22. As previously stated, 2.5 million of that increase is due to special education. Debt service and transportation comprise a majority of the remaining $1.3 million increase. Also, in '21-'22, the Board of Education approved salary increases for all non-instructional employees in the hopes of retaining and recruiting staff. This cost of just under $250,000 has a compounding effect on future budgets, as any increases in salary will be based on the higher wages currently in place. Several of the non-instructional bargaining units are negotiating now. Revenue is still fluid, as the New York State budget hasn't been adopted yet. The proposed tax levy increase of $224,736 is the amount allowed under the tax cap, 1.45%. In projecting revenue, the governor's proposal was used for the majority of the aid figures. This resulted in a $1,289,391 increase in aid. The remaining revenue is interest, tuition, admissions, HF and Bosse's property rental, and refund of prior-year expenditures, Medicaid, a transfer from debt service, and $1.871 million in appropriated fund balance. Appropriated fund balance seems high, but the fund balance that was appropriated for the current school year will not be needed, as revenue and expenditures are higher and lower, respectively, than anticipated. And speaking with Dr. Tims, our financial advisor, he concurs with that. The superintendent and I have a meeting with him later this week to revise the five-year financial plan, and I'll be sharing that with you in April or May. It is my hope that the New York State budget will pass on time and that state aid figures will be available, so that adoption of the final budget and revenue can be done at the April 11th meeting. There is a resolution on tonight's agenda to add a proposition to the ballot in May for three 66-passenger buses and a plow truck with a sander. These purchases will be made using reserve funds and will have no effect on the tax levy. Any questions? Please say no.
It's a good thing that's recorded, so people can go back and...
Did I say it too fast?
No, it was a lot of information. Great job, Kathy.
What would the cost have been for those additional positions that were able to bring onboard? What was the estimated cost for those?
We were going to have... Yeah, probably. I think it was four AIS.
Well, people there, more than that, it's about half a million.
Oh, yeah.
Counselors in social work.
Right. And AIS, right. Yeah, you got to figure 50-ish each plus benefits.
One of the things I just want to point out is, obviously Kathy covered a lot, and I think you did a great job. It's a pretty complex process for people who are tuning in. There's a lot of variables, a lot of... It's a dynamic environment, to be honest. Obviously, since our last budget proposal, it's been a complete reversal. But one of the things I want to point out, that she had mentioned, that we don't want to just put grant-funded positions in place and then turn around in a year and a half and have to lay those people off. And there are grant-funded positions now. We did that last year. Some of the positions are in place now, the elementary schools and in special education are currently grant-funded. So, we didn't want to stack, have 20 employees that we're trying to bring into the general fund. So, we're doing this, getting creative. Chris is doing a great job working with Bosse's and community agencies to try to fill some of those gaps that we had planned on filling with our own staff members. But special education costs, you don't see, you can't plan for this. I mean, Nikki had a pretty good idea with her department. Did not expect to get 14 high-cost kids coming from one cohort in kindergarten, especially looking at approximately $150,000 apiece. It's staggering.
As your grade level goes up, with the nickel work, does the dollar amount go up?
Some of the students come back. You know, in my report, I kept pretty brief, and I was going to ask Nikki to kind of speak and answer any questions that you have, and she's certainly more of an authority on that. But we do get some kids back from those programs that initially go out. So, I don't know if autism is the right diagnosis for everybody. Some of these kids, frankly, just aren't exposed to the written word or spoken to in an educational manner whatsoever, so they come to us non-verbal and almost non-communicative, not used to rules or anything, so they get quickly labeled or diagnosed, but some of them...
We do have five students who are planning to come back to district from the autism program for next year. They don't end up in that program just because of an autism diagnosis. Sometimes, they don't even have an autism diagnosis. It's more of those global delays, the lack of language, the difficulties with social interaction skills. So, the staff there, down at McNabb, it's a really good program, and they do keep in contact with us frequently. I've been down there probably three or four times, just to visit programs and check on the progress of our students this school year so far. They do a really nice job in terms of recommending students to come back to district when they're ready. Actually, the program, one of the teachers had contacted me and said, "If you have space in your district, you know, I'll take a couple classrooms and bring a couple staff with me, and I'll help to transition it to your staff." But we don't have the space, we don't have the teachers, and we don't have the providers within district at this point. I know it's been looked at multiple times in terms of cost.
So, any questions, Kathy? Hopefully not. Some of the students are definitely going to probably stay in the program, and they will be high-cost students. You do get aid back in those subsequent years, but as Kathy said, the cost has to be borne in year one. So, that's really what blew our plans out of the water, was that unforeseen aspect of our program.
Any other questions?
And I'll say this, too. You know, Kathy went over a lot, so I encourage people at home to watch this and to watch it repeatedly and ask us any questions you may have. She'll point, I was going to make... I'll come back to it. You know, as Vinnie says, I don't have... I usually have a loss of words, and I did want to point something out. Oh, a lot of the things that we talked about that are still in this budget, whether it's the athletic trainer, the HR secretary. We found creative ways to ensure that we can keep some of those pieces in the budget, so that we're not taking the costs that are coming to us from programming and adding layers. I mean, these are positions that we think are going to serve our students. And we're certainly willing to answer any questions the board or the committee might have about our decisions as to what's in that budget and what's not.
I know, sure, that's presentation with all of you, so that if anyone asks you any questions, then you'll have... Then you'll have this.
All right, thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Our next presentation we have from our math department, high school and middle school math.
Are you going to use the hard work?
No. Hi, my name's Liz Trice. I'm the six through eight department chair at the middle school. Thanks for having us tonight. I would say in the middle school this year has filled us with lots of just news. Starting with, we had a new addition to our math department in early March. Mr. Peter Ricardi came to us and was filling the seventh-grade position that has been taught by four of the middle school teachers previously this year, filling in for a retirement position last year. So, we're excited to have him with us, because it seems our department is now finally complete again. We also have implemented a new series in the middle school. E-math instruction is something that we began in September. This is the first time that we've had an actual math series, a text to go from. For many, many years, we've been creating all our own materials, just going off of the standards that we have, and this has been exciting for us, not only just to give us the structure that we need, but we're noticing, especially since I was able to teach the last seven months in seventh grade myself, being a sixth-grade teacher, we're just noticing the consistency and continuity that goes from one grade level to the next, and we're hoping to see a lot of gains based off of that. Another thing that we have, are looking to at least try for the remainder of the school year, is a program called ALeaf Math, which actually Dr. Wojcicki brought to us. And on Superintendent's Day, we were able to sit through a training, the whole department, and learn how to use this. It's a computer-based program that basically will adjust to student needs based off of real-time data that we're able to provide. It's something that we're hoping to implement in our academic support classes, just to kind of strengthen skills and really pinpoint those deficits that students have, rather than in a very generalized setting, but a more individualized way. That we hope to do once state exams are over, because our goal for the next several weeks in academic support is going to be to use our sample tests online, just to expose kids to the types of problems they're going to see, how to input them. In sixth grade, we were not able to do the simulation in math, we did it in ELA. So, those kids need even more exposure to a computer-based program. Since this is the first year, we're going to be doing our state tests that way. But once the state exams are over, we hope to switch over to the ALeaf Math and guide our skills that way as well. We're also focusing a lot more heavily this year on our vertical alignment. We were able to meet also on Superintendent's Day with some of the Boulevard teachers, which we haven't done in a few years, and have some really good discussions about any deficits that we're seeing with the students, ways that we can incorporate common language so that what they're hearing down in the elementary school carries with them to us and then also up to the high school. We're going to be meeting, actually, the eighth grade and myself with the high school in a few weeks to further discuss vertical alignment, because I just think it has been a little bit choppy over the years, and that's something that we really want to start streamlining. Horizontally, I think we're doing a really good job in the middle school. Our teachers meet on a weekly basis to continue planning and tweaking and developing materials. So, that's something that we've been really strong on and will continue with. As the year goes on, our goals, as I said, is to just try and incorporate some more individualized learning with the ALeaf Math, to continue our discussions hopefully over the summer with curriculum work, with alignment with both, for us, the elementary and the high school. And we'd like to further develop, now that we're going to almost have one year under our belt with this series, and we know how it works and how to pace things, we'd also like to start creating more materials with bell ringers and exit tickets, and just additional hands-on activities, things that can further just their understanding of the material.
Liz, over to slide, what are you seeing with some private things?
Just a lot of basic skills. One thing we really talked about, and it seems very basic, but it's just math facts. It's incorporated in so many things that we do, and they're noticing it down there in the elementary as well. And we even talked about if the possibility... It's hard with series, because there is such a structure to them and there's a pacing to them. But we even talked about the incorporation, if possible, back of like math minutes. You know, the quick practice, you know your ones, now you go to your twos. Now you know... Because that's really hindering them in a lot of ways. They're just unable to move forward. I know I've gotten to the point, just so that we can continue the topic and not get so caught up on it, even in sixth grade, I've got stick-on multiplication charts in the corner of the desks, just so that we're not waiting... I have kids that are still counting on their fingers, you know, and it's March. So, I just think it's the basic skills we've kind of moved away with, and Common Core I think did that to us a little bit. But it's just, we can't forget that those are the necessary foundation to move forward.
Whoa, wait a second. Give me a second. Got kids in sixth grade, seventh grade, counting on their finger?
Yeah, you have high schoolers counting on their fingers. They would have to plug in two times four into a calculator. So, and sometimes six times one into a calculator.
Hi, I'm Melissa Catania. I'm the department chair at the high school. This is my third year as department chair. I just wanted to go through the math department up at the high school, just their names, just so you're aware of who's up there. We have Ryan Mulligan, Marissa Howland, Kelly Borden, Ken Ely, Jen Lemery, Roger Risch, and newest to our department is Mr. Brian Bassow. He was hired in September, and he is currently teaching Algebra and Intro to Algebra II. We have a ton of courses that we're offering up there. Of course, we have all of our Intro to our Regents' Level courses, so we have Intro to Algebra, Intro to Geometry, and Intro to Algebra II. We also have our Common Core Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II. We offer Honors pre-Calc, which is through FMCC, and that is four college credits. We have Supercaliflus, which is through Syracuse University, which is four college credits. We have a new course this year, Financial and Practical Mathematics, which is new. Mr. Risch is teaching that, and I think this is a great third year of math for a lot of kids up there. It's more practical mathematics that they're interested in. Statistics, which was gone this year, is back, will be back in September, and that is seven college credits. And Mr. Mulligan will be teaching that, because he's certified through Syracuse for Supercalc and Statistics. And so, that means that students can leave with 15 college credits from the high school. As Liz said, with E-math, six through eight has adopted that, and at the high school level, we're also going to go strictly into E-math. Right now, we have one or two teachers per Regents' Level that is using E-math. But over the summer, we're going to use our summer curriculum days to transition over to all E-math for Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II. And we also have Teachers Pay Teachers, which is something that we have... Now, the math department has to use for supplements, and that's a nice creative way for us to have supplemental work to the E-math instruction. The Common Core E-math exams will be given up until June of '25, even though the Next Generation Algebra exam will be given in June of '24. So, students will have the option to take both exams. The Next Gen standards to be taught at the high school level will begin the school year of '25-'26, and then the first administration of the Next Gen exam will be June of '26. So, that is my goal. I hope I said that all correctly. But that will be our goal, to get a couple years under our belt with E-math, and then they'll have the option to take both exams and then start with our Next Gen standards. So, a lot coming up in the next few years. Currently, our algebra teachers meet every D-Day for our horizontal alignment, and that's really important. I had to get them back on track, because we had four algebra teachers kind of teaching at different paces. And so, I had to get them back on track. We finally did. I think we're at a good place, but I will continue to monitor that. And just recently, I asked Riley Jaeger, who is the eighth-grade algebra teacher, to join our algebra teachers at the high school, just because I feel that it's a good idea that he work with them, since he's teaching the same course. So, he's coming up on the 13th, I'm sorry, to meet with them. And also, on the 6th of April, we'll meet with the eighth-grade teachers for our vertical alignment to discuss common language, because really, she had talked about facts. I mean, that is something that, you know, I would love to discuss with elementary. And common language, because different teachers use different language, and it gets really confusing for a lot of our kids. So, we really have to concentrate on using common language throughout. I think that that's going to help them be more successful. You know, so our goals for the math department, I want to definitely continue the communication between the middle school and the high school, and implementing E-math in all of our Regents' Level courses up through pre-Calc. I do teach PM school on Tuesdays, and I really think that it would be a great idea once the high school develops the E-math maybe a few years. I think it's something that we should look at, maybe in the APEX program or even PM school, implementing the E-math also. I think the program that they're using now is... I don't think it's very effective, for what I see, on a weekly basis. And I think that if we can implement E-math, I think it would be a great idea, because they provide videos and...
For the E-math, for every lesson, they have like a video?
Yes.
And they explain everything? They go through the all lesson? I watch the videos all the time, they're really helpful.
Yes, and I think that since the PM school and the APEX kids aren't getting any type of instruction, they're just going through, and some are taking notes, some are not taking notes. I think having a video to watch, I think, would be definitely more effective than what they're seeing right now. So, I think that's something that we should really look into.
Yeah, sometimes just like repetition helps. Doesn't mean that the teacher, you know, isn't teaching one... Doesn't mean that the teacher, you know, isn't teaching well, but sometimes you need repetition so it can get in.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Also, you know, now that the regents exams will be taking place in June, I think we're going to be working on some motivation to get our students to come to regents review classes. So that's what we're going to be talking about soon in the next month or so, you know, maybe the start of May when regents review classes start. And we have to try to motivate these kids to come to classes. It's going to be hard because they don't like to stay after school, so, but they're really going to need that review for the regents exam in June. Also, thinking about other classes that we can develop for that third year of math because kids are having a tough time with some and some aren't going in that honors track. We do have the financial math, so I think that that's a great start. But maybe in the future, we could think of some other classes that maybe the math department can develop for that third-year math for them. And my last thing, which is actually pretty important, a couple of years ago, I went down to Fonda and I observed for the day. And then we, of course, had the pleasure of meeting Donna Stad last year as our math consultant. And I really think it's a good idea to have some curriculum or criteria, I'm sorry, criteria for students to move from one regents level to the next. Some other districts around us have an 80 or an 85 to move to the next regents level. You know, I think we would have to start a little bit lower, especially coming off of COVID. But even setting like a standard of 75 in the, in the regions, in the regions course before it, they would need a 75 to move to the next regents level. I think that that's something that we should really look into for the next year or possibly the year after. But I think it's really important, I think as a math department, we're seeing these kids move to the next level in fall. And that's not what we want. We want the students to be successful. So I think we need to really consider having some criteria for them to move to the next level. And if they don't reach that, they would go into a pre-class, into a pre-algebra or pre-geometry. Because we're finding that these kids are lacking these skills of, you know, being able to pick out your factors of eight. And when you can't do that, you can't really go into like an algebra two class. So I really think we need to kind of make some criteria for them to be able to move from one class to the next. Regions level, I'm talking, not our intros.
Has that conversation happened, taken place with a guidance counselor and parents and students?
Has it taken place? You know what? For years, we've talked about it. It just doesn't, you know, these, it doesn't seem to happen, so.
I mean, I've worked on it for years from what you're talking about.
Yes.
In our profession, obviously, as you're aware, there's a move to, that students have a right to, for accessibility. But I certainly understand the need to, that's where I think the magic happens, when a guidance counselor and a student and his or her parent sit down and have those conversations about what's the best course for him or her to take and be brutally honest about their likelihood of success. And then some flexibility within the first few weeks of the following school year as well. We can't be too rigid, but point taken and, you know, I think, I hope the board understands what she's talking about, like algebra to geometry, geometry to algebra trig, if a student isn't showing, sometimes attendance. We have so many extenuating factors that influence our student's success that sometimes you hate to deprive it because a kid may have had a really turbulent year, their 10th-grade year, and might not be a true indication of his or her abilities. So I would, I kind of prefer a case-by-case, boots-on-the-ground, face-to-face conversation to make those decisions, but I'm amiable. Chris, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that?
No, it's certainly something that many of the component districts in each of the MOCs have adopted in the last five to 10 years. I'm familiar with that from my principalship in Mayfield and something we adopted as well there. That being said, it definitely does, you know, I think a deeper dive is required and we'll do that in the coming months and maybe over the summer, we can look at it more fully and have that discussion next year and maybe implement something for '23, '24.
Liz, is there any concern about students after several years of no regents exams that they've kind of forgotten how important it is to show up?
There are some, I mean, there's juniors that haven't sat an exam. So it's going to be, you know, it's going to be tough for them. It's going to be their first time. So, you know, there's that concern.
Is there any thoughts about starting early, maybe in April even, to try to start driving home, to show where they're at? Or conversations about final exam or regents exam, what's going to be counted? Have we had those conversations?
We haven't had them with the student body yet.
But at the department level?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, next slide, we have a visitation from the ELA department. Hi. Christian Boers, 6'8" ELA department chair. How are you? We printed off a little bit of a report. Did you get it in color? You did? Okay. You see all that red? That's the first page, all the red ink. I would like to sort of direct your attention to item B very first, the iReady results based on our second diagnostic. The diagnostic sort of measures annual typical growth. And you'll notice, it's broken down on phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary comprehension, literature and comprehension, informational text. And you see, as we get down towards the bottom, a lot of red. And when I first saw that, I said, yikes. And I knew it was serious because I've been having conversations with Lori Kent as well, who is the iReady maven. And I knew it was serious because she started calling me Chris. I said, people have known me since I was a kid, like Kevin, Dave, or Sharon, or even Mr. Wojcicki, Dr. Wojcicki, or Kelly, they call me Chris. No one called, I said, oh, boy. And she was right. You'll notice there's a huge spike in vocabulary, all right, where students are scoring low in vocab. And because of that, comprehension lit and comprehension informational text is being affected. As a matter of fact, by our second diagnostic, only 29% of our students are showing any progress towards annual typical growth compared to last year where it was 67%. It could be due to the COVID slide. It could be due to a multitude of factors. I mean, the way the test was administered compared to past years. But it's certainly been a vehicle for conversation in that, yes, we want to maintain the rigor and the approach and everything that we've got going on in our classes and the middle school levels. But we also have to keep in mind that these students have not had a normal year in quite some time, however cliche that may sound. And there's been a lot of reteaching going on. I've never seen such a high volume of students scoring low in phonics, basic phonics at the middle school level. And that's interesting. It's not a horrible statistic. We can certainly work with it. But from that, what do we do? We have been activating the teacher toolkit on iReady, which is almost like an online textbook. And we've really been pushing that at least in all of our academic support classes. And that was certainly the driving vehicle for us to request an alignment day on the March 11th Superintendent's Day with, and thank you, Dr. Wojcicki and Brian Devesquell and Andy and Dave for putting this all together for us. We were able to meet with the ELA teachers in grades three through five from Boulevard and to discuss, as I mentioned in the first item, common writing tasks, language. You know, at Boulevard, they were telling us of some acronym that they use. Oh, tell me how, there's like, so, but, why, but because, or whatever. It was some, it was this whole list of words. To me, it sounded like a White Snake song. I said, wait, what are you talking about? I said, that's terrific, but we've never used it before. It was such a beautiful, like, the way they had it all laid out. I said, that's awesome. And yet, based on what they have, we were doing essentially the same thing, but in more letters or less letters, T-T-Q-A, common language, so that we can effectively approach writing and reading instruction on all the basics, sentence structure, grammar, evidence-based claims, main idea detail, summary, you name it. And it was nice because we got to work in small groups. I had Holly Cook in the eighth grade working with, help me out, Kevin, Zach, Zachfield in fifth grade, and sharing ideas and sharing pictures of charts and whatever. It was really eye-opening and I anticipate more conversations in the future. So I apologize for starting my whole little spiel on a bad note with the iReady, but I anticipate that we're going to show at least some semblance of growth. I would like to meet with Andy again in the future to discuss how we are going to approach the third diagnostic. In the past, we've had two-hour delay schedules in giving that test. This year, we kind of split it up where we're not eating up instruction time from all the other core classes, so we offer it in ELA and then finish it up in academic support. And I think that might be a little disruptive. And it's not anyone's fault but my own because I suggested it, so, anyway. So there's that. So, yeah. Next steps, working with three through eight. Another positive thing, which I neglected to list on here, is renewed interest in research. And these kids have been home for a year and a half, two years. A lot of our research is geared towards community-based research projects. Holly Cook and Kelsey Lehrer in the eighth grade with their co-teachers, Meredith Fancher and Tricia Javron, they conduct a research on community volunteer organizations and suggestions on how to like improve and how to like, you know, coordinate and work with these programs, like I believe it was Code Blue Shelter, the Salvation Army, all these different organizations. In the seventh grade, we will be conducting research on what we call the Ghosts of Gloverville. I'm not teaching the occult. But what it is, it's like these old buildings that still, these old locations that are still, what's their history? You know, I talked to the kids about up in the attic of the Mohawk Harvest, that was the Caston Opera House, like, what? You know, they're all excited about it. So we'll be researching, like Great Rentals, used to be a Woolworth, all that stuff, the Pan Am, and hopefully, we'd like to do some sort of, it's not geocaching, what do they call that? It's like where you're logging information about these locations. Anyway, we'll be starting that in April, in seventh grade. I'm trying not to give away too much kids at home if you're listening. It's a real surprise, I apologize. So, but that's essentially it on our end. I know last year, I talked about choice reading. We're keeping that in mind. But again, it's a lot of time out. Let's go back, all right? Because when you have students confusing lowercase b with lowercase d, it's a little eye-opening, so. But they can do it. I have faith in them. We all do. And our department's been doing a great job in keeping that in mind.
Good evening. I'm Karen Pollan. I'm the department chair for the high school. This is my first year as department chair, so hello and welcome, or well, thank you for welcoming me. I'm happy to be here. It's been a busy year in the high school. There's been a lot of changes. First of all, all the kids are back, so that's been interesting. But we're still always focused on the regents exam, even though we just found out, you know, what was it, a few weeks ago, that we are going to be having the exam in June. We're always vertically aligned for the regents exam. So in ninth grade, the students are exposed to like all, all parts of the test. We just give them like mini versions, so they're used to the argument writing and the text analysis and the reading comprehension questions. In 10th grade, we really start giving them, showing them the actual test and working with them just to get through the test and their pacing and their stamina. And then by the time we get them in 11th grade, it's time to polish and to find their weaknesses and to sort of pinpoint that to get them to pass the test. We usually give it in January, as you know, and then they can retry again in June. January was canceled. So all of our eggs are in the June basket. Deep breath, I hope we'll be fine. I teach all 11th graders and I really can't predict how they're going to do, you know? Some days, they sit and they do a nice job and other days, we can't get them to do too much, you know? But we have, we have high hopes. So we're vertically aligned and we're always concentrating on the test. We don't like to teach to the test, but we know that that's a reality, that they need to pass that and then graduate, so. The next thing I'd like to tell you about, which is new and very exciting, we're going to be restructuring our honors program next year. So normally, the kids who are in 10th grade honors, let's say, would take AP Language and Composition, and then senior year, they would go on to take AP Literature and Composition. The only way that they would get credit for those courses is if they passed the AP exam in the spring. And that's, that's a really hard exam. And keep in mind how many other exams, especially the juniors, have. So with the help of Dr. Wojcicki, which has been wonderful, we've decided to co-seat these classes with FMCC. So our juniors next year will be taking FMCC 103, co-seated with AP Lang. So they'll have the opportunity to pass the class and get three FMCC credits. And then they can even sit and take the AP Lang test and get another three credits. That's junior year. And then senior year, they're going to go on to take the FMCC course 104 with the AP Lit. So this, we thought this was pretty cool, just because a lot of our kids, not a lot, but maybe 40%, 30% get the scores on the AP test and the rest take that college-level class and don't get any credit. So we're really excited about this. So we've been pushing. I've been going in and talking to the classes and, you know, we're fortunate, I don't know if you're going to still do this, but you pay for this, the college classes. And we try telling the kids, there's no way, like, that's just measurable, you know? And it's a lot easier to take these college classes in high school with us helping them and the parents helping them than when they're on their own. So we are super psyched about that change in the English department. Middle school has iReady. We have Common Lit. This isn't really a diagnostic program, but it helps us pinpoint strengths and weaknesses. And this has been really helpful. We've had two assessments, the pre-assessment in the fall and then the mid-year assessment. And just looking at the graph here, you know, this is my results. And like clearly, I could see, okay, the kids are doing really badly in vocabulary acquisition. And so then I can go on Common Lit and I can gear activities and assessments that will pinpoint that weakness. And so it's been helpful too at department meetings, so we can look, you know, nine through 12. And interestingly, it's the same, it's the same weakness throughout, which is, which is kind of nice, not nice, but easy for us to sort of gear our instruction. But, yeah, so we've been doing that as far as diagnostic data and data-driven instruction. Let's see. Oh, another thing we were working on with the foreign language department is the seal of biliteracy. So this year, I've been working with Sue Fitzgerald on this, eight students are eligible to receive the seal of biliteracy, which this is a new and prestigious award that we're offering. And next year and the year after, we're going to be sort of gearing the kids in the classes to be like checking off the boxes, so it's easy to achieve the seal. They're doing all the work. Now they're just going to really be held accountable for it and then get this prestigious award. So that's, we've been busy doing that. Looking ahead, just as Missy said, the next generation of learning starts in September '23 for grade nine, and then the regents will change in 2026. The last bit of news, which is, we just found out at 2:00 this afternoon, I met with Osama and Dr. Demali and Sheila Attilio, and we're thinking of a new elective in the English department. And we're hoping that you'll have me back next month and I can maybe pitch it to you for your approval. We think it might be called Creative Journalism and Digital Marketing. And, does it sound awesome? I don't know. We're going to meet this week, we're going to talk about it. It's a combination, it will, it will be an English elective and it will be a full year. And we think we're going to start pitching it maybe to 10th graders because they have the most room in their schedule for this elective. And it's going to teach them pretty much how to communicate in this digital world, journalism, public speaking, interpersonal communication skills, do some promotion of Gloverville. You know, we have, we have a lot of stuff to think out, flush out, whatever, but hopefully maybe next month, we might be able to pitch this to you. This would be really neat because we don't have anything like this. You know, our kids have to go out to the Career and Tech Center if they want to pursue digital media and everything in their life is digital, of course, as you know. So we're pretty psyched about it.
The timing of this is good. I was at Kegro today and looking at the careers that kindergarten first and second graders want to do and half of them want to be YouTubers. So it sounds like a very timely, very timely elective.
Does anybody have any questions?
We don't want to crack the language at the high school anymore. No, that was years ago.
That was our comparison, it was public speaking, all of that stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Those are similar. It's just like from old into English 12 or no English 11.
Karen, do you know how the new regents are going to change? What are the expectations?
You know, I really don't know because then... You know, I really don't know, because the standards really aren't changing too much for the next gen, like one of the big things is to become a lifelong learner. I don't know how you're going to assess that on the Regents exam. I'm just guessing and I don't even know, maybe Dennis knows, I don't, but I think it might be. But might it be digital, like all digital, all remote, or like online? Computer-based, thank you. So maybe that, but I don't know, we'll be ready no matter what. Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. I don't think we have anyone here for public comment tonight. Anybody out in Facebook land has any comments, please leave it in the chat, somebody from the district will contact you within the next few days. Moving right along, board discussion, we have the Board of Education minutes from the March seventh meeting. Any questions on those? Motion to approve those by John, seconded by Kelly, all in favor? That was everybody. Any other discussion, anything else for board discussion tonight? All right, moving right along, the Superintendent's report. Okay, good evening, everybody, again. First, I wanted to point out, the room's been painted, it's good to be back down here in the boardroom. Thank Bobby Holber, a new painter, did a nice job. Bobby moved over from the grounds crew. Mr. Savion, what do you think? Critic of lie? He's got better eyes than I do, I was impressed. Obviously, the meeting board wasn't used tonight, but we certainly expect it, it will be utilized in further presentations, I'm sure our architects and construction managers will be happy to have access to it. So, thank Bobby for his efforts. Also wanted to congratulate the Jen Flynn and her crew for their play Rent again. I think last time I spoke about it, it was just prior to it, and if everybody got a chance to see it, it was very well done. I've received numerous emails from people in our community, people outside our community who had the opportunity to see it, just how impressed they were. So, kudos to our students and our directors and, you know, the fact that we had a live band playing all the music that accompanied them, and we had ten, twelve, fifteen kids who could all be the lead in any other production, it was really impressive. So, she's built a heck of a program and we're very proud of their efforts. Want to acknowledge on this agenda that there's a donation from Dick's Sporting Goods for, it's a product donation agreement, for approximately eighty-five hundred dollars for various physical education equipment, weights and things like that. So, that was very generous of them and we appreciate that. Also wanted to point out that on this agenda is Sue Fitzgerald's retirement, after twenty-three years' service to the district. Thank her for her service and wish her long, happy, healthy retirement. And I just wanted to mention that on Thursday and Friday this week, I'll be meeting as part of the Downtown Revitalization Initiative Committee, overviewing the submitted proposals for the revitalization grant, the ten million dollars the district's receiving. Mayor asked me to be on it. We already met once at the Globe Theater, we met once virtually, then once in person at the Globe Theater, and we're meeting twice more this week, so that should be taking shape and we're moving right along.
The city, the city. He said district, he meant city.
I'm sorry.
The city's receiving ten million.
City, yeah, no, we're not receiving, we're receiving more than that, just not extra. And last, obviously, I wanted to save any time, the board wanted to talk a little bit more. If you do, we'd cover a lot of it in Kathy's report about the increase in special education costs. I asked Nikki to be up here to answer any questions the board might have. Nikki, if you had something specifically you wanted to speak to?
Our numbers haven't really changed significantly, in terms of the students that we refer to our Bosse's programs. They have gone up, but not, you know, huge leaps and bounds. We try to be really fiscally responsible in terms of who's going to those programs or who's being referred to those, but the costs of programs have gone up and some of the needs associated with the students. Some of our students are requiring one-on-one aides, and we don't assign those to a student lightly. Those are students who, they really do need, most of it's physical issues, that they need that support for, sometimes it's in the autism program or, and they need it for behavioral support, but more often than not, it's in the life skills program where they need the physical support. So the costs as a whole have gone up, our classification rate has kind of hung out around the same place. So, the numbers, it's basically the cost associated with that.
I was actually surprised to see that I asked Nikki to give us, do we, our classification rate? It's about seventeen point nine percent of our student population is classified, and New York State's average is eighteen. I think a lot of people would think Gloverville's got an astronomical number of students classified and we're classifying too many kids. For a community with the socioeconomic challenges that we have, to be below the state average is not bad. And, you know, I think we're a bit of a victim of our own success, because I've had people say to me, oh, I have a friend whose kids, they went to move to Gloverville, they had special needs children because your reputation for servicing special needs is so good. And I heard that back when I was a principal at Fonda as well, that Gloverville was a district that didn't cut any corners when it comes to special education. And I'd certainly say that's still the case today. Some things we have in place to try to offset or to try to keep students from being classified, or like the Talking is Teaching Initiative, trying to really empower young parents to be that primary teacher in a child's life. Early interventions, our pre-K programs, Laurie's done a great job over the years trying to foster that, but you don't have control over students prior to compulsory education age. And, you know, we really need to empower young parents and help them understand the importance of early interventions, reading to their children, speaking to their children, engaging them outside in play, in active learning opportunities, it's critical. And, you know, you heard it from our program, every meeting we have, we hear it from our elementary people, our secondary people. It's not lip service, our teachers are working hard to meet the needs of our students. We have many students who have many challenges, so it's a significant portion of our budget because the needs are so varied and it's not one-size-fits-all. You know, the other piece I want to point out is that the board approved some instructional, non-instructional salary increases this year out of pure necessity. You heard in Kathy's report, HFM Bosse had to do it with their bus drivers, and that's increased our costs. We have vacant aid positions, we have vacant clerical positions, we have vacant TA positions, we have vacant teacher positions, although I think we finally filled those, literally on this agenda and the previous one. So this is not something that, you know, we're not, the board's not just feeling like Santa Claus. You know, this is a measured response to the needs in the community. You know, people can debate the reason, whether it's federal stimulus money, it's keeping people home, policies that allow people to live a comfortable life without seeking employment, whatever the case may be, that, you know, we're not weighing in on that, we're just trying to play our hand as best we can to meet the needs of the students we serve. Appreciate Kathy's work in leading this budget, it's not been an easy process this year. And as she said, we're still working with assumed numbers until we get a budget from Albany, that's what we'll continue to do. That concludes my report, I'll need executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Okay. Any questions? Move on to the next item, the Student Board Member Report.
I'm Massa Masri, I'm the alternate student member. So my first topic is the Hats and Hoods petition. I would like to bring to the board's attention that there's a petition going around to school to allow hats and hoods inside the GHS building. A student made this petition and has already gotten some signatures. I think this is a great thing because our students are taking action about what they really want to change in the school, and this could definitely be a creative gateway for our students to express themselves more freely. My second, my other topic is that some students have been asking me like to bring to the board, they were just asking about like if they can have a microwave in the lunchroom, because like it would be a good idea to heat up the food they bring from home. And next on the positive, no, as you know, we have Regents, I mean, I'm not sure if it's a positive thing, but, but I can gladly say that some of our teachers, they're starting the review classes after school. I know, I know for certain that Ms. Hazard is starting her first one this Thursday. I think it's a great idea because we haven't had Regentses for like two years in a row, and they're doing like incentives, I know Ms. Hazard's going to be doing like raffle tickets. I think it's just a great idea like to motivate students to come to these review classes because I think, I mean, the Regents exams are like based on everything we've done through the entire year, and I think every student can like just review everything on their own. There has to be like something, like a teacher, they can trust, put trust in so they can follow their pathway and they can prepare them for the Regentses. And another thing we've heard from Dr. DiMali on Friday during the assembly, that we have like a high passing rate from like many years, we have like an eighty-two percent rate, so.
Graduation rate?
Yeah. It just makes me feel very proud to be a senior in Gloverville High School. Thank you.
Can you tell me a little bit more about the hats and hoods? What exactly is that?
So, I heard from.
I mean, what's the triangle of accomplish?
Allowing to, you know.
Just to wear hats every day?
They really, you don't even know like how many students really get annoyed when a teacher tells them, you know, to not wear a hood or hat. Yeah, they want, you know, to express themselves more freely, so. Personally, I don't find it as a problem, but you know, it's not only about me, yeah.
I'm just wondering what, yeah. Well, I, you know, I wasn't here with that workplace, but I had it when I was a principal at Fonda. And the reason I think schools have head geared policies, which there's always exemptions, religious and medical, things like that, but you want students, you're trying to prepare them for a professional life beyond school and, and looking to part, looking, you know, being presentable and engaging the world around you and the environment you're in is important, and we think that being, looking professional, looking to part, being ready to go is part of that. So, you know, I remember having students and being in buildings where students were allowed to almost collapse within themselves with hats and hoodies that you couldn't see their face. And so it was almost a mechanism to help them, bring them out of their shell, to get them to engage and interface eyeball to eyeball with people. That's really, it's not about just torturing kids and trying to limit their freedom and personal choice, there's a method to the madness. How about a compromise? All right, if I wear hats and hoods, are they going to check your cell phones in at the main office? Do you think that, do you think that fly?
Well, like actually, we started, like we can go to the bathrooms, we have to leave them at the desks, so, yeah. I think, we actually have a student liaison committee in the high school, and we had a meeting with Dr. DiMali. So a student, Dr. DiMali was talking about the same thing, you said, you know, like preparing them for a more professional world, which is true, but like a student also said that like high school acts, you know, you spend most of your time there, so it acts like your second home. So it's not, it's not just a professional home, it's there where you meet your teachers, your friends, and just like another home for you.
I just like to hear students feel that way about school.
He's like, this is great.
Yeah, that's what I heard, and that's what I feel about it, because you spend a lot of time there since you were a kid.
I don't know if any of the principals or administration want to weigh in?
Today's students and their hats are different than, I never wore a hat growing up unless I was on the ball field, so, I don't know. But I agree with Mr. Howland, that was a, you know, the reason, and in my mind was always to get you ready to go outside. This is the way I was brought up, the military, you take your hat off when you walk indoors, you just don't wear hats indoors.
I'm certainly happy to hear the students are coalescing and coming up with their ideas and concerns. A microwave, you know, that might be a tougher one, but under supervision, you know, because we don't want somebody sticking something metal in a microwave, somebody who's not familiar, it sounds crazy in this day and age, but some houses don't have microwaves, so somebody sticks a fork in a microwave, we got a problem. I've been in districts, maybe even this one, where a popcorn bag has sent the entire student body out of the building, there are fire trucks up the hill, so there's, there's reasons why you don't see those everywhere. But, you know, I hope the student body continues to meet with Dr. DiMali and Mr. By, because I think having students have their voices heard is important. You might not get what you're asking for all the time, but I think sometimes you'll find, yeah, you'll find an amenable ear and certainly an explanation that you can take back to your peers. Thank you. Any other questions for? Move on to recommended items, we have items seven point zero one through sixteen point one zero. Anybody need anything polled or any questions? All right, motion to approve those by Benny, seconded by Kevin, all in favor? All right, and a motion to go into executive session, discuss a contract item by Mike, seconded at this time. All in favor? All right, there'll be no action taken afterwards, thank you everyone for attending.